I think my talk is getting a little too far.
I don't know if they drew their names, but they were important to us.
Customized screens.
Let's go ahead and get started. We've got a number of important items on the agenda here this afternoon in a very limited amount of time this afternoon to deal with them. So we'd like to get started. The first thing we'd like to do is thank Laura. Laura, we're back here, a first grade teacher. She's given us all some thank you notes thanking the state board for what we do. This is a noteworthy experience. I don't believe this has ever happened. State Board, we tend to get notes that's complimentary about some of the things we have done.
I have four for those that have not gotten one yet.
Okay, if you haven't gotten one, probably several of us here haven't. But particularly interesting, mine says my favorite part, the school was recess. That's why I was selected for that. Anyway, we certainly do appreciate this. Laura, if you could, give us an email address or something where we can write the notes.
Yes, sir, I shall.
Thanking you and your kids. We really appreciate it. Yeah, very nice of you. It's really well done. I was impressed with the work the first graders are doing in this respect. Thank you, Laura. Okay, we've got two things here that we want to work on. First of all is NAP. We're very much interested in trying to better understand NAP and particularly wanting to get NAP to affirm some of the good success that we're having with some of our other assessments. So our effort here is to improve our understanding of what NAP is, how it relates to some of our state assessments and so forth. But David, do you want to introduce the program here?
Thank you, Chairman Rossen. I've known Steve Blazer for a few years now, maybe three or four years, through our relationship with Education Testing Services, EPS, who also provides our practice exam, as you well know. Steve is the former National Director of NAP, and I'm going to let him tell you a lot more about himself and his relationship with the NAP exam. But maybe two years, 18 months ago, Dr. Nixon and I had the opportunity to go to Princeton, and they were keenly interested in the work that the state of Tennessee and the state board in particular was doing around teacher evaluation at the time and tying student learning results into that. And they asked us to come up and talk to some of their researchers and psychometricians about what we were doing. And we engaged Steve in a conversation about Tennessee's relationship to NAP in terms of our student learning outcomes and the parallelism that rides alongside with NAP. And if they are aligned, should they be aligned, what does disparity look like, is disparity a problem? And so we just invited Steve to come here and give you a lot of good background information to help you be a more informed policymaker down the road relative to what's referred to as the nation's report card, the national assessment of education progress. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to my friend Steve Blazer and let him spend some time with you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. Let me say a couple of things by way of disclosure first, as David mentioned, I'm a recovering director of NAP. I've worked at EPS for a very long time, and I'm actually a testing and measurement guy, which means I like talking about this stuff, which means two things. One, it's really kind of sad because nobody likes talking about this stuff, but it also means I can get deeply interested in things that bore the heck out of virtually anybody else. Which is a long-winded way of saying, I would much rather, even in a fairly large room, this be a conversation rather than a presentation. The thing that drives me most crazy about my more academic friends is that they... Can you just hang on to that thought for the next 29 slides, then I'll get to it. You know, my completion of a presentation is not, excuse me, as important as your learning what you need to know about NAP. So I came equipped, prepared to talk about a few things, but I don't mind talking about anything else. Second of all, a little disclosure about being a testing expert, which is after I was the NAP director, I was the Vice President of EPS for Test Development, which ran the main technical unit. And I have two daughters, and one of them at the time was about 17. And you know, your main job, if you have, how many people here either have or have had teenage kids? So your main job is chauffeur, and silent chauffeur is preferred. You're not supposed to engage in weedy banter with especially your daughter and her friends, which is sort of interesting because those of us who also were at some point in the very, very distant past teenage boys had always wondered what the conversations were like. And by the way, I don't want to go off in that direction, but it turns out they were in fact way worse than we ever thought they were. I mean, none of, no guy could ever do enough good. They were either knuckle draggers or wimps or some combination of the... Anyway, but that is aside. This was all going fine. I was listening and learning and being silent. Till at some point, one of the other girls said something like, "Your dad looks, you know, clean enough. What does he do for a living?" And you have to understand, my daughter, who is very talkative, sort of, she didn't know what to say. She, you know, because in that moment I realized, if your job really was had of test development at EPS, if you really were responsible for the SAT and AP tests, there was really nothing worse for your dad to be. It's like arms for hostages or sort of petty drug deals would have been sort of way the heck better. So, you know, I say that all in advance to, that's me. And if I get interested in things that you're not, just tell me and we'll talk about something else. So what I was going to cover today is a little bit of NAP's history, because in this case, the history actually helps understand the program a bit. A few key facts about NAP, about how it organizes, how it works. It is very different than any other test given in the country. By the way, NAP's going on in the field right now. We're in schools in Tennessee and all the other states doing our main 2013 data collections as we speak. A few notes about some tools you can use to investigate NAP and recent results for Tennessee I did bring here. I didn't bring slides trying to compare that to state assessment results, but I can talk about some of the reasons that things may or may not line up. And then some challenges facing NAP. As you know, the student assessment system is undergoing profound changes. PARC will change the way things work in this state, smarter balance in other states. These two consortia will include most of the nation. So NAP as the only national measure of what's going on will be sort of different. There will be other things that at least get close. Not quite national, there are of course still a couple of big population centers not in the consortia, but we'll talk about that. So that's what I'm prepared to talk about.
Steve, I think a good agenda, but I think that we do want to focus somewhere in time on how we can compare NAP to our assessment, why they're different, so how they're like, how they're different. I don't want to...
No, but let me give you an advanced organizer because it'll come up in the talk a bit, which is we've run into this question in a number of states where it's not usually that NAP's going in a different direction than the state assessment. It's that we're seeing change in NAP somewhat more slowly. There can be three or four reasons, and I will come back to this, but since you asked, let me address it directly. There can be three or four reasons that range from one of those things to something to worry about. In the one of those things department, NAP is built around a national consensus framework for what students ought to know and be able to do in mathematics and reading and writing and science. State frameworks are going to differ. It may be you're actually focusing on something different. Now, one thing you can do is dig into the NAP data at the level of subscale. So in math, for example, if your overall trends look different, but you're focusing more on algebra and geometry, one of the cool things about NAP is you can actually go take a look at that and see whether you line up better with some of the subscale data. Second reason for difference is NAP, for reasons I'll explain to you, can afford to use fairly expensive and fairly sophisticated question types. NAP runs a lot of open-ended testing. State assessments often can't, they simply can't afford to. The reason to run open-ended testing is in fact because it'll allow you to test something different than you can with straightforward multiple choice questions. So the second thing to look at is are we getting some different sort of kind of data out of NAP than we can get out of the state assessment? And that's often true, and that's often a good reason frankly to have two assessments. I mean, if you can't afford to do something with every kid, you can afford to do it with a sample, and then it's a little hard on policy publics, but the trick is how do you use these two things together, understanding they're telling different stories? The other difference, the other thing that sort of comes up now and again is, and we want to be careful about this, NAP doesn't have stakes for individual students involved, which depending on your point of view, either makes it a more suspect measure or a better measure. More suspect because, you know, we have endless studies of and debates about student motivation, although by the way, the answer to skip to that is fourth and eighth grade, we've never found any evidence that for the most part, kids are doing anything other than giving their best on NAP. 12th grade, we in fact do find some evidence, although they vote there with their feet. In other words, they just don't show up, since it's voluntary at the student level. So, but that leads us into the realm of statistical adjustments. But the flip side is also, NAP is largely cheating proof. So, you know, how you factor those things into this conversation? The last thing is the silly thing, which is I was actually brought out in 2003, I was still the NAP director in California, because this was their interest. I said, "Look, we went up 10 points on our state assessment, and we only went up three points on NAP, what's going on?" And it was literally when I felt like Elvis. It was literally one of these things where I did a tiny bit of research going in, and the California scale was like 1,000 points and the NAP scale was 300 points, and I said, "They're really the same," and left, you know, and everybody was happy. So, you know, before we get into the sort of more obscure measurement reasons, this may be true, some of it's just the scales don't always look the same. There is one thing that is unambiguously different between NAP and virtually all state tests, by the way, which is where the proficiency levels have been put. That's, as we'll see, that's a sort of tougher conversation. A lot of people have criticized the NAP levels. My company actually didn't work on those, ACT didn't, and I actually think did a good job, by the way. But they have far fewer people classified as proficient than virtually any of the state assessments do. You want to bet, and it is based on no data, which always makes me uncomfortable, but I have a feeling that some of the levels that may emerge out of the college and career ready movement may actually look a bit more like NAP levels than they have like past levels in states. But that, I can't prove that yet. I don't know whether the commissioner or any of the board members have thoughts about that. That's among other things, a political question, but I bet you it's true.
Seems like a good bet.
Yeah. So anyway, I was going to start with a bit of history, and you know, I don't want to, the history is, don't want to bore anybody with too much history, so I'm not going to go back too far or say too much. So here's some key dates in, so, and there seem to be a lot of them. So the first key date is 1789. Why? Because they ratified the United States Constitution. And the big thing about the United States Constitution, and I know the folks in Washington don't always act like this, but that education is not under the control of the national government. This is a state authority. Now, for one thing, that's actually easy to do in 1789 because there actually isn't much of a real system of education anyway, so there's nothing to put in charge of the federal. But the control is by state and local governments, and over the years since 1789, there have been substantial federal interventions, but they were episodic. In other words, like they decided they're going to have land-grant colleges, which if you think about it, is a big federal push on state education systems. Mandatory education. At some point, that became law to land, that became a right, you know, among other things defended under the 14th Amendment. Brown versus Board of Education is clearly the federal government imposing, you know, a national regulation, a national judicial interpretation on the states. Important, good, but change of the balance of power between nation and states. Having said that, compared to any other country in which I've worked, local control of education here is very strong. Most other countries, it's deeply centralized, and as you know, it's a very politically sensitive issue. Districts, states guard control of education, they take it seriously, they view it as part of American democracy, right? That's the way American democracy is written. Now, this means there is no national curriculum or certainly assessment or test in 1789, which has a funny side effect, which means for most of early US history, there actually is no national education data. So literacy rates until the 1960s, for example, were the averages of whatever the states reported were their literacy rates. The way they gathered data was up to them, and you know, it was, there was no knowledge of what kids knew and could do. So after 1789, the next important thing I decided to happen, this is my view of American history, I know there were wars and stuff like that in the middle, but we're going to miss those, Sputnik happened. And how many people remember Sputnik? Some of you, I know you're young, but yeah, I was born about the same time as Sputnik, so. And Sputnik, anybody remember? Why was Sputnik important for education? Well, do a participant or you'll... Why was Sputnik important for education?
Because it led to a big push in American science education to try to catch up and pass the rush.
Exactly right. I mean, because the nation sort of freaked out, you know, which is, we thought we were the first in the world in that, and those guys, you know, shot up a satellite, and it was going to shoot down at us in any minute. So all of a sudden, in '57, that version of what we're going through now, a national realization that we had to do something about the education system really started. And one small piece of that is all of a sudden, when people looked around for how we were doing, they didn't know. There was no national information about what students learned, there was no national survey. This led between '62 and '65, and I won't go through all this stuff, some people to start thinking about how we could figure out what American kids knew and could do. Now, the system has to get us information on what kids know and can do, but it has to meet a couple of data collection goals and anticipated political objections, and the big two are, this can't be seen as a national curriculum. It can't be seen as a national test. It can't be seen as intrusive on individuals. In other words, it can't be representing a burden. It can't be getting information the government has no right to. It can't take away school privileges. And like I said, it can't be seen as setting a national curriculum. Now, if you're a test maker, those are actually sort of hard conditions, because usually we kind of like testing what we've taught people, and if you say, "Well, you can't pay any attention to what you've taught people," it sort of creates problems. That's the system. And in '69, they sort of managed to pull it off. This is when they give the first national assessment. It was actually given in science, reading and mathematics two years later. The basic NAP law is designed to protect political privileges, and many of these things are still true of the laws that govern NAP. It is illegal, not just not done, but illegal to report individual or school level data. Now, I think that actually becomes an advantage for NAP, because it turns out if you focus on being a big population survey, you can actually do a lot of really neat stuff that you can't do if you're reporting kids' scores. But you can't in NAP. That's a condition of the NAP law in 1969, and that remains true today. NAP is barred from these two things. Originally, NAP has samples only at the national or regional levels. Now, that did change along the way. I'll come to that in the next slide. NAP uses both student and item sampling, something called matrix sampling, which if anybody's having trouble sleeping, I'll explain in a few minutes, and if you tell it over and over yourself again at night, you will sleep immediately. It's also from the beginning, uses both academic questions, reading, writing, and math, and background questions to provide context. Do you read for fun? What kind of stuff do you study in school? By law, it has to release about a third of its questions every year. In other words, these go out to the public for use. It is actually illegal, and this remains true, and this is in the last version of ESEA, to try to use NAP to influence the curriculum if you're either a federal employee or a quote agent of the federal government. We spent about an hour trying to figure out if somebody like me, who was a contractor, was an agent of the federal government, but we decided I would just skip trying to influence curriculum because it's safer that way. And NAP was limited at first to reporting at the question level. In other words, the first versions of NAP, until 1984 actually, the whole reporting was, here's how kids did on this question. So you'd release questions like, you know, who was, who's buried in Grant's tomb, and it would say 80% of the kids knew it was Mrs. Grant or, you know, whatever the old joke on that is. You know, that was the way NAP data was reported. The first work was actually done out of university, University of Michigan, and then later by the Education Commission of the states, and they did this for many years. Now, this one's going to sound self-serving because, you know, it involves EPS, but in 1984, the contract moved from ECS to EPS. Federal government likes incremental change, so they changed one letter, but from my point of view, it was a big one. But the reason it moves is actually important, and this sounds fancy, which is, NAP decided it needed to move beyond this question-by-question reporting to actually have a scale. And the reason to have a scale is two or threefold. One, it was real hard to summarize any distributional data question by question. We didn't actually know how groups compared on the whole construct, we just knew how they compared on individual questions, and averages of questions are sort of not much better from that point of view, so we had to bring some statistical machinery to this. It also, therefore, it made it not valuable as something that talked about achievement trends, which was what the program was all about. But the other part that's a very big deal is, NAP wanted to start doing some distributional stuff, which is a fancy way of saying have levels at which we talked about student performance. So we implemented a 500-point scale, and we started saying, okay, at level 350, here's what kids characteristically know and can do, and then you can see if more people reach that level in successive assessments. Next big change was in the late 80s, and this was a huge political deal, which is the Alexander James Commission, Lamar Alexander, in fact, since I'm in this state, ran a commission to discuss why NAP wasn't more valuable, and they discovered that it was because there was no data at the state level. Which led to something that a colleague of mine swiped a phrase from another discipline, but the Lake Wobegon effect was what it was called, which was this, which is what you had is all the states were reporting their data, since there were no state-level NAP. All the states reported their data against norms on big norm reference tests. Now, this isn't evil, by the way, this is just the funny way things work in the testing world. Norms were really expensive to produce nationally, so they only did them every 10 years. The problem is, if the whole country actually slowly got better, then everybody could actually be above the national average, which, you know, didn't make sense, but that led to, for any of you who are Garrison Keillor fans, Lake Wobegon, where all children are in fact above average. So since NAP, every time it's done, created a national norm, it's based around a representative national sample, you could get around this problem. And it also created a board to run NAP. The board was to make sure that frankly bureaucrats in the Department of Ed didn't have too much policy authority in NAP, so they created an independent governance board. First thing that happened is some of the bureaucrats moved from the department to the board, but that's a less public story, but it's funny anyway, and more performance assessment. So NAP then first formed this governing board, went away from just scale anchoring points to actually have the achievement levels that had been so controversial. And I was just joining NAP when they did the first trial state assessment, and it was fascinating because we thought maybe 10 states would sign up, because states didn't want this, and we got 37 plus DC, and that was the lowest number we ever got. And this was voluntary all through the NCLB year. Every state except South Dakota participated at least once. So this became sort of a hit. And so by the way, to get back to your question, and I found this fascinating because all this could really do is give them trouble. You know, all it could do is sort of, at best, it was going to prove that your state assessment results were okay, at worst, it was going to prove they weren't, but you know what? A lot of good people work in this field. We don't always give them credit. Most everybody really wanted to know. And we also, we had a sign-off. States could, we don't anymore, states could choose to not release their data. Never had anybody do it, no matter what the data looked like, and it wasn't always pretty. So, you know, it was, now the trial state assessment, this being the federal government, the assessment was still trial till 2003. Finally, when NCLB made it mandatory, they decided to take the trial designation off it finally, but there you go. The state assessment restructured NAP in an important way, in that only four of the subjects became state-level subjects, reading, writing, math, and science. NAP does a bunch of other stuff that I think's real important. I mean, because I was hired as a social studies director for one thing, but I mean originally, history, civics, geography, the arts, but these remain national-level surveys where data is reported. data is reported at the regional level, and that, you know, sort of makes them of less policy value. Nobody's really in charge of the Northeast particularly, or the West, or the South, so. 1996 is a key year, because I became executive director of NAEP, and it's widely credited to be the beginning of the Golden NAEP. Now, the really big change in, in 1996 is the move from biannual to annual data collections. NAEP happened every two years. Now, the state program happened every two years, but national data collections happened in the intervening years, and that's still a feature of NAEP. Odd numbered years we're out bothering you people in the states, even number of years we're bothering you people in the states, but a bunch of silly numbers, we're just doing national estimates. 2003, my last point in history, the last big change, No Child Left Behind, which essentially, and I wanna explain what I mean by essentially, makes NAEP largely mandatory. It creates four and eight in reading and math. Largely because NAEP is not, in fact, mandatory for schools or students. They can still choose to opt out. But at this point, states, because it's mandatory participation for states, they heavily recruit schools, and fourth grade and eighth grade students tend to show up. I mean, they mostly go to school and do what they're told, and so student participation was never an issue. 12th grade, a little different. My 12th graders have never done what I told them about anything, and why should NAEP be any different? NAEP today. Few oversights. NAEP remains mandated by Congress. There's actually a few laws that cover it. There used to be a NAEP and Nagbean IES Act, and then NAEP was described also in the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, and someday we'll have another one of those things, and I'm not waiting on it much. NAEP's mandated by Congress, and it's administered by the US Department of Education, a division of that called the National Center for Education Statistics, which is officially one of what I think are seven federal statistical agencies. NAEP's actually a statistical indicator program, really. It has an independent policy board. I mentioned earlier, the national assessment governing board. The goals of NAEP are really different than your state tests. They report on what groups of students know and can do in a variety of broadly defined subject areas. The groups is important. We don't even try to measure at the individual level. And the broadly defined is important. We give what for individuals would be very, very long tests. So, for example, the writing test is 22 half-hour-long writing prompts. It would take, therefore, an individual 11 hours to sit and complete the whole writing assessment. There were days when I would have liked to have done that to my children, but it's probably mean, and it's probably not an efficient mode of testing. But in NAEP, we actually only have to test individual students for an hour each. We give them each two of those pieces, and we mix them around, and I'll talk about that in a couple of slides. But the, so, you can only do that if you're not gonna worry too much that your score is comparable to your score. And the way around that is, you don't have scores. We estimate the scores for groups of interest. And when I say groups, I don't just mean these traditional things you're thinking about, like groups defined by ethnicity. For us, everything's a group. If we ask you how many hours a day of homework you do, those of you who say six hours a day, you're a group. We wanna compare you to those who say four hours a day. By the way, we ask that question all the time, and I should tell you, it's one of the, it's one of the questions policymakers find most surprising, just to the side. Anybody know why? How much homework do you do doesn't work like you'd think it would? What would your intuition be? Would more homework be good, right? Sign more homework, more academic rigor? David's saying yes. Anybody know why maybe the data doesn't look like that?
They all claim they do a huge amount of hours of homework.
First of all, you do have student reporting issues, but you got a different problem, which is, what takes Corey six hours may take Peter 12 hours. Getting through it fast actually is a pretty good predictor of being good at it, usually. We don't like talking about that in education that quickly, but, so it turns out it was a little curvilinear, which is a fancy word, that saying you did none, that's usually pretty bad. Saying you do like eight hours, that's actually also pretty bad. Saying you're somewhere in the middle is, but that wasn't the answer people were looking for, which is one of the dangers of NAEP, by the way. The other story I like to tell in this regard is the geography people. They got their own NAEP, and they were, the National Geographic got paid for it, they loved it, you know, and I loved it. It was the most fun assessment I ever did. We had kids writing maps and using Atlas, as it was beautiful. But they were really interested. They want kids not to just take social studies courses, they wanted kids to take geography courses. So we asked, did you take a geography course? And we, at high school, we managed to prove that kids who took geography courses were worse at geography than kids who didn't. It's like, all right, anybody, how do you explain that in the policy space? There's actually a real easy explanation, it turns out. Anybody? Tracking. In many schools, geography is a lower tracked course than history. And by the way, this is one of the, the reason I tell this story entirely out, which is, one of the dangers of NAEP is that NAEP is not a controlled experiment. NAEP is a big population survey. So, this is not a place to make causal connections. We look at policy variables, but you gotta be very careful about saying geography classes lead to better geography, because it's clearly not true that, even though the correlation was backwards, it's clearly not true that taking geography will make you worse at geography. I mean, that's, that's beyond belief. It just meant the kids who happened to be stuck in geography were worse at geography. So, you know, anyways. That relates to the second bullet here. NAEP reports on factors related to achievement. And NAEP, because we sample, can afford to be a little expensive about how we test, so we use a lot of performance assessments in NAEP. There's a lot of open-ended testing. NAEP's made up of really three pieces: cognitive measures, which is a fancy way of saying tests, student, teacher and school background questionnaires, this contextual data we talked about, and the famed data from other sources, which is, we really do try to be efficient. We don't actually ask kids whether they're girls or boys. We grab school records where we can. We, now, sometimes we actually use the school records and ask them anyway. We do that around Tennessee, because we get different answers, and it's really interesting to us. We report the school record ones, but the, we keep the other ones, because we continually are trying to figure out what's going on. Especially at fourth grade, you get very different answers from, since the school records are essentially parents, we get very different answers from kids and parents, and I still don't know what to make of that, but, you know. Pardon me?
Was it a boy or a girl?
Not a boy or a girl. We don't even ask them that, no, on what their ethnicity is. I mean, we get, traditionally, if you ask students, you will get a far higher percentage of the population reported as Hispanic-American than you will if you look at school records. And at fourth grade, with the, that's actually at both fourth and eighth. At fourth grade, you get a way higher portion of the population reporting as Native American or American Indian than you'll get from school records. Partially, this is because, I think in the, Native American's one of these terms that has these two meanings, which is, I was born here, meaning, and Native American slash American Indian, meaning something, but it's, but the differences were notable around hispanicity, around Hispanic-American reporting. You would be, you would get a population, if you use fourth-grade kid reporting, that looks very different from the census, to the point that it worried us. You know, I'm not a sociologist, so I don't know what to make of it. I just grab the data, but, so what NAEP isn't? You see? To prove I can use graphics? David didn't think so. He thought I would use words. There you go, sort of. With the jazz hands going, you know, it's my daughter's. NAEP is not a test. NAEP does not give individual children scores, and it is not just that we don't report scores for individual kids. We don't actually have them. It actually doesn't work in that way. If you're taking a non-parallel, to use the writing example again, one-eleventh of a very big assessment, there's no reason to expect that the part somebody else gets will be the same as what you get. And in fact, we actually don't want it to be. If you're giving individual scores, you really want everybody to be running the same race. If you're trying to treat the whole country as, we wanna cover this much stuff, you actually don't. So, it's not used for building accountability either. We do try to be cost-effective. I know people who look at NAEP don't think that. And, you know, admittedly, many people, I mean, I sometimes joke that we also have the only customer who actually can legally print money. But, you know, we do try to do this in a way that limits burden and cost. What are the problems we face when we build NAEP? We've gotta cover these broad areas and report on subscales. We don't just give one math test, we give five. Afterward, I give it algebra, number of operations, geometry, measurement, and whatever I forget. Data analysis as statistics. It's always good for somebody in statistics to forget the statistics part of the next one. So again, as I said earlier, this leads to very long tests if one talks about. Now, by the way, an interesting aside, the consortium tests will in fact be rather long. So they're trying to, in fact, do domain coverage on a scale at the individual kid level. So, you know, so that'll be interesting. That'll make one of the differences go away. How do we help be efficient? Well, we do student and item sampling. Student sampling is the easy part. Everybody knows what this means. We grab representative samples at the national and state levels. These range in size from about 8,000 if we're doing a national-only sample, to about 250,000 if we're doing national, state-by-state, and TUDA, which is NAEP's for trial urban district assessment. At some point, NAEP has decided it can do large district estimates, so we do those in some large districts. Unfortunately, none of the ones in Tennessee. Although, two of your districts qualify under the official criteria, and I actually don't know whether they've applied for selection or not, by the way. I just, Nashville and Memphis are both big enough and meet the population characteristics that the government has set up for. So, if we're doing that, we get about a quarter million kids in a sample. In a big year like this, in NCLB years, where we're, you know, we're gonna be running three assessments, we'll do about a million and a half students. That's remembering that we're only doing the state stuff at grades four and eight. We don't assess at all those other grades. We grab fourth, eighth and 12th grade students for NAEP. The item sampling part's the part that is a little harder for people, but again, it's nobody takes the whole thing. The assessment's divided into discrete blocks, we call them, and they're paired together in experimental design. So imagine an assessment in which we have 10 blocks. David might get one and two, Gary might get three and four, the commissioner might get one and four, the chairman might get four and one. And we structure them so we can put everything together in a big scale, and so that nothing shows up only at the end of the test, because we want to get a sort of clean estimate, not based on fatigue. This is called the BIB design, for those of you in the field. And for those of you not in the field, you can forget that immediately, but that's what it's called. And it's a form of matrix sampling, which is a fancy way of saying, think of one axis where you have all the kids in the country, and another where you have all the possible test questions in the assessment, and we grab from a matrix. We grab some kids, take some parts of the assessment. Now, you wouldn't wanna do this in your state test, even if you could, because if you're in a print book world, it results in a whole lot of books. We usually run way more than 200 different combinations of books for printing. But the way we get around that is, we just don't give that many. You know, again, we do the whole nation with those quarter million kids in each subject, and you're generalizing to a population of about 5 million nationally, because we do both public and private schools. So, at each grade. So, this actually is more efficient than it looks like. What subjects does NAEP play in? Well, reading and math are the sort of core of NAEP. They happen every two years at grades four, eight and 12 at the state level, and at the national level at grade 12 only. These are mandatory under No Child Left Behind. One small piece of information here that I think is gonna be important, since the chairman asked about alignment. This sounds like one of these sort of small things. I think it's actually a rather big thing, which is, NAEP still does a reading test and a writing test. Common Core are doing ELA assessments, and many states do. That is one reason the results can be different. And it's a sort of not trivial reason the results can be different. I've actually suggested to NCES that they find a way to put reading and writing together in some way to allow us to estimate an ELA score. They rightly push back and say, they don't have a framework for that yet. The governing board has separate frameworks for reading and writing. This is a place where Common Core really has changed things quite a lot. In some ways, and Sarah's here, who knows a lot about Common Core, my interpretation of the ELA Common Core is, you really can't consider writing absent the stuff people read, that's the stimuli for those for writing, which is a point of view, frankly, that I agree with. It's just not the way NAEP's organized. The other parts of the state NAEP program, the other things given in Tennessee, are science and writing, and those happen every four years, though they're offset from each other. So, some years, this year, we're in a, we get this wrong, I think we're in a science year this year, and we were, we were in 2011 with a writing year at the state level. So those are given at the state level, grades four and eight, nationally, again, at grade 12. Again, those go at the district assessments. And then the other subjects, and there's a lot of them, history, civics, geography, arts, technology and literacy, and engineering literacy, are national samples, given less frequently. They're very interesting surveys. Probably one of the great learning experiences and terrifying experiences of my life was the first national arts assessment, where we really did have kids doing art stuff. You know, we had like little bits of clay, all those other, none of them fit the IRT models particularly well, but it was sort of fun testing and measuring stuff. We also have one other part of the program, which you'll hear about now and again, called the Long-Term Trend Program. There's a little piece of NAEP that actually goes back to 1972, that we've kept going. Same, basically same constructs. We finally swapped out some of the items at some point. The feds love that stuff. They love that long-term policy trend. Just among friends, and I'm with 900 of my closest friends, I have more doubts about the program. I think in the end, that trend line is long enough that I'm not sure I believe it. I'm not sure, if the inference is, if you took 1972 kids and put them on today's assessment, here's what they'd do. Our stuff has changed. Not anymore, our smartphones, or, you know, we had nothing. So, we had pencils, and boxes, pencil boxes. Commissioner mentioned something earlier, that one of the things we've often tried to talk about is, what's NAEP's role in NCLB? The first draft we saw of NCLB, NAEP was gonna be unofficial confirmation of state assessment results. Many people, a little bit even me, argued that we should tone that down a bit. There are many good reasons you won't get the same results on all these assessments. If you did, they wouldn't be different assessments. So, the use here is informed, but the press clearly will pick up stories where NAEP doesn't look like state assessments. You know, you folks who live in the policy space may not agree with this. I've always viewed those as sort of healthy conversations, nine times out of 10, that, you know, getting some independent confirmation, one of the things about NCLB is everybody had their own testing program. So some independent confirmation that at least directionally, things were moving the same way, I think in the end was more helpful for people than it wasn't. And I think, you know, that'll continue to be something NAEP does in the consortium era, and, so, but this was clearly the intention, to be some sort of independent unofficial result. What's going on today? Well, a lot of open-ended questions in NAEP, usually at least half the testing time. In some of the measures, like writing, it's 100% of the testing time. All we do is have the kids writing essays. Most of the instruments are about four to six hours if you strung them all together. Each student's tested for 50 minutes of content, and then 10 minutes or so of background questions. We're still mostly a pencil and paper program, although it's under transition. Writing moved entirely to computer. Technology, engineering literacy, and about half of science are currently given on computer. The science part that's on computer are the experimental simulations that NAEP's been running. And by the way, there's some very cool stuff. I can make sure you have a website address where NAEP didn't really need work in having kids, you know, drop little balls through jars of honey at different temperatures to see. And a little funny side story, again, when I was first in NAEP, we thought we were great, because we did real performance testing. We bought lab kits. But it turns out that in testing school, they don't teach you two things. One, you got real worried real quickly about what kids could actually choke on in those lab kits, and so that sort of, we toned down the experiments compared to what you could do in a computer simulation. The other thing is, I mentioned the NAEP's given in the states, but we have these other jurisdictions who show up in NAEP, D.C., but also the Department of Defense schools, given a federal thing. And it turns out, if you have little experiments with these little bags of white powder that say mystery powder, and you give vinegar and stuff to see what the white powder is, they don't like you sending those to military bases. You know, who knew? It wasn't something they taught me in psychometrics and measurement school, but, you know, it was a real problem, it turned out. So, anyway, as I mentioned, there is hands-on and interactive science, and we report scales, subscales and achievement efficiency levels. I'm not gonna spend any time on questionnaires, and I'm not really gonna spend any time on tools, because I'm trying to keep some track of... because I'm trying to keep some track of the time. You know, NAPE is a reporting program. It is not a score-to-kid program. So reports are still done in print, although less and less. We print very little these days, mostly online. We do reports for the nation and for individual states. You've probably seen your state NAPE reports. They're quite brief now. When I ran the program, they were sort of phone book sized and we sent them to states and I'm sure they kept doors open and other things like that. So, because we'd always have, you know, the joys of American democracy, we'd always have these meetings of all the NAPE states. And we'd say, what do you want in your report? You can eat, we want to know what the three key variables we should be reporting on. And they all picked like three different variables. So, you know, when in doubt, we just ended up with 150 variables in these reports that went on forever. So we've sort of given up. And instead of bothering, we do very brief, four-page reports and have this thing called the Data Explorer where if you want to dig in and grab background variables of interest to you folks, you know, we're good to go. And again, we've, the work I've been proudest of in the last decade or so on NAPE is making the data accessible. When I started out, this was something only specialists could play with. You had to get a license and you had to understand the weird kinds of analysis this involves. Now, you can go on the web and run any cross-tabulation. And by the way, things that are, and this isn't a joke, when I first became executive director of the program in 96, I still had to worry if we were doing a big analysis run about making sure I was clear of payroll or the SAT scoring. I mean, it took that much computer power. Now, like, you can do things on the internet and you get frustrated if it doesn't happen in 20 seconds. That used to actually take us days. And in the background, we run even the big analyses through some daisy chain PCs. I mean, it's, it's something, you know, all this stuff, we used to spend all this time. I don't know, how many of you have a computing or any kind of statistical analysis background? So any of the stuff in grad school, we were so elegant about writing code to do it. Like, you just don't do statistical anywhere. Just crunch the numbers. It'll, it'll take like eight seconds. It's cool. So anyway, released questions, state profiles pages are on the web. I thought I chose some Tennessee data, if you're interested. I brought a bit. And so Tennessee performed comparably to the nation and the South Region in science, but lower in reading and math. I don't know if that makes any sense, given curricular discussions you've had over the years. That's just the way the data looks. So to read some of these, if you look at reading at grade four, Tennessee scored a 215 compared to national public average of 220 and a South Regional average of 220. Now, I want to put this in context because I always worry about looking at numbers, which is what does five points mean? So NAPE, as I said, are big accurate surveys. So the difference in color means these are statistically significant differences. But if there's a concept that the world misunderstands, it's statistically significant. Statistically significant means simply that I am 95% sure those numbers are actually really different, that I can reject the null hypothesis. I'm also really sure of something else. It's not that big a difference. Put it in normal effect size terms, it's about a sixth of a standard deviation or a seventh, somewhere in that range. So, you know, put it in other terms, it's one more question or two right in an average student's book, over 40 questions. But, you know, those metrics may give you a better sense of the magnitude. This is not a huge difference. There are some other jurisdictions that are hugely different. So don't overinterpret statistical significance. I'm not just, I say that all the time, by the way, my guys will say. Not just because I happen to be in front of Tennessee folks. In math, differences between Tennessee and the nation are bigger. More like, you know, a sort of third of standard deviation sitting there. And in science, interestingly, they're just not there at all. In science, Tennessee really looks statistically at least like the rest of the country. So, you know, again, an interesting question. I don't know, actually, there's been special focus on science in recent years. You know, you certainly have some famous science centers in the state, whether those have influence on education. And often it's like, yeah, we got to look into that. It's one of those things. I don't, I, the joy of my job is I just do numbers. I don't have to interpret numbers. It's, then we get to the embarrassing part of the social system. So what do we do about any of this? It's like, I don't know, man, I'm not a teacher. I'm just a tester. But the percentage under above the basic level, and here's what we talked about earlier where the commissioner said it's not a bad bet. Percentages in Tennessee are in the, you know, about 60% of the grade four readers are above the basic level, 70% of the grade eight readers. As high as three-quarters of the grade four mathematics students. And by the way, there's actually a very happy story in mathematics. I'll get to it in a slide or two. When you get down to the proficiency level, which is the NAPE expectation, both for the nation and for Tennessee, the numbers are, you know, are chastening. They're, you know, you're looking at between a quarter and a third of the students in all of these places who have reached what NAPE's declared to be, represents great proficiency. Now, in the spirit of full disclosure, a lot of people don't like the NAPE expectation. And we didn't do it. And included among them was at least one National Academy of Science reporter that thought they were too harsh. Some of the research I've seen around readiness would lead me to be a little kinder toward them. I was on that side, by the way. I was not very fond of that one. Some of the research I've seen around readiness makes them look not as crazy. So that'll be in discussion over the next few years. Here's a totally unreadable table the guy's prepared for me, but I'll leave the slideshow with you and you can make sense of it. This is really a simple demographic comparison of Tennessee. This isn't about achievement, just demographics. Tennessee and other states in the Southern Region. You probably knew all this, there are some interesting differences. You know, basically, I would summarize as Tennessee has a somewhat lower Hispanic-American population than the rest of the region, which reports to us, with the exception of Kentucky, which Tennessee looks something like. It has a more urban population than the rest of this region, which I wouldn't have actually thought about going in until I sorts out and looked at these data. Eligible means eligible for free and reduced price lunch, by the way. And here, again, Tennessee looks like the Southern Region but has a far higher percentage eligible at eighth grade at least than the nation does on average. So, you know, different SES rate there than the state. I'm sorry, was there a question on one of the numbers? The, the, it actually assumes with disabilities, ELL is classified as eligible. The classified employment learner, by the way, is the number that, of any of these, if you look at the whole nation, shows massive volatility. Any guess on what that percentage is in California, grade four percent classified as eligible? Nobody wants to wager a guess?
Yeah.
Not quite that high, but not bad, 33 in the last survey. So one to three students in that state system.
Steve, can you, am I going back to the, town is not a demographic breakdown that we're used to seeing much versus rural or suburban. Where are we, where, do we know the definition of a town?
Yeah, I'm going to have to look up the specific word, but it's sort of small city, large town.
So some of our rural areas might be considered towns, but they might be considered rural as well.
Where, one thing I think is true, we're picking up whatever the census is. We're not making any of these up, but. Yeah, it's, one of the problems we had is, is we used to just do urban, urban fringe, suburban, and rural. But it turned out that urban fringe suburban was such a sort of grab bag of stuff that the small city, large town became an interesting category. But I got to look at, I just got to look up the census definition for what's in that category. I think it's like a population density of something, but not in a metropolitan statistical area. But I, I, I'm like a corporate operator, I don't know anything. I used to.
I don't remember.
So one of the things we do is disaggregate data by traditional ethnic groups because in some cases, this is, you can tell a different story than the overall average. The District of Columbia, for example, has far and away the lowest average of any participating jurisdiction, but actually one of the highest averages for white American students. Just a population that, where there are very few white American students in public schools. So it's a little bit Simpson Paradox. Here's some data for Tennessee in reading. And, you know, there's a sense of a few things that you get from here in both Tennessee and the rest of the country with it. We talk about them a lot, but the persistence of performance gaps is real, is true, and remains a huge problem. And so here's the rating for your four and grade eight data and for these students. And by eligibility for free and reduced price lunch. And you can cross-tabulate these on the NAPE data if you want to see ethnicity by. Sort of the best measure we have is socioeconomic status. Same data for math. We'll just leave it up there for a minute. Story is, is not much different, other than, there are a few places where the differences aren't statistically significant, where they were looking at the, at the reading comparisons. I don't know what to make of that. It's in the Hispanic-American population, which is a fairly small sample in Tennessee. So there's, to a certain extent, you're seeing sampling error playing out. Yeah.
The common lore is that 10 scale points is about one grade level equivalent. Is that, do you think that's inaccurate? Because I've heard some people say, oh, you can't do that. Some people say, no, actually, it's roughly equivalent.
Yeah, I mean, this has been, that's a really good question, Commissioner. It's a funny question only because, you know, we had a cross-grade scale. Well, you didn't really have a growth metric. And for years, I resisted that. But yes, I think it's an entirely good answer and I will, I will tell you why. You know, we actually used to have a six-month testing window. And at some point, we compressed that into six weeks. But it caused us to actually take a look at what we were losing from what end of the window. Magically, we saw at grade four about a point a month. And so, and then we did this others where we noticed the fourth grade mean and the eighth grade mean were sort of 40 points apart and we used that cross-grade metrics. And between those two things, I was like, good to go. I am much less sure of that between eight and 12. I mean, for whatever, and I know that sounds like a sort of goofy thing to say, but, you know, because growth between eight and 12 is funny only because growth between 11 and 12 is funny, which is the, senioritis doesn't really appear to be a real thing. So, you know, it's almost like eight to 11 may work like that, but 12, you're heading back down or something, you know. On the slow study decline, most of us have been on ever since.
It's a reasonable statement that at least as of winter-spring 2011, white students in Tennessee were about a grade level behind white students in other Southern states and the rest of the country. Black students, same thing.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, you know, would I stand up as a social science guy and say I can absolutely prove that? No, but am I unhappy with that inference? No, I think that everything we saw when we actually did take a look at time span in NAPE indicated that about a point a month was about a sensible amount of growth, not just to expect, but that we tended to see. So, so yeah, I mean, it's, it's, now, I mean, now let me give you the big disclaimer. I think that's a good interpretation and this is going to sound like mumbo jumbo, but it, I would be careful of interpreting it ways in that that means that kids in state B can do what kids in state A are going to be taught next year or something like that. Rather than the content. Well, the people don't always get that attention. But yeah, I can live with the 10 points a year burden statement. So, I mean, the people at NCES would tear my hair out, but nobody tells them, you know, because they're statistically educated. And here's science. Where the patterns are sort of similar, but the differences are much smaller. As you saw elsewhere, you know, you're really looking. You also notice that the overall averages may look different than the group-by-group patterns and this has become a percentage of different state to state and in the nation. That Tennessee has fairly high populations of white and African-American students, fairly low population of African-American students.
We've only come up with one reasonable hypothesis on why science varies so much. Which is that we actually test science every year here in Tennessee and not every state does, which ensures a certain level of focus on science at every grade in curriculum.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I, that, you know, what do I know? But I, that, I would not at all be surprised if, because we've noticed some things like that over the years, that states that do include direct writing in their measures tend to do better on NAPE. It's sort of one of those, and why not moments? NAPE has a direct writing, is a direct writing assessment. So in this case, focus on science, especially at early grades, is actually really different state to state. One state, I think Hawaii really essentially doesn't have a, much of coverage of science at all at fourth grade. So if you're actually doing science assessments annually as part of your state program, that probably is getting it a little more attention than it is in other grades. I, that sounds like a real good explanation, actually. I just, I didn't, I didn't put two and two together. We actually work on your state student programs. I probably should have known that. Anyway, that's, that's, that's those data. Here's some of the same things looking at the percents out of proficient in, in, in science. And interestingly, here is a place where at, at fourth grade, you know, again, a little by group, under the nation, though not always by a statistically significant amount. But, you know, at fourth grade, in general, higher percentages are, are showing up proficient on, on science. So here's some trend stuff. And Tennessee performance over time. One of the reasons I'm not that into the long-term trend lines is at this point, our short-term trend lines are actually quite long. We go back to 1990s. So to me, no, no statistical data should go back to a period before I was employed. That was my gathering data. So let's start by looking at the reading data. Reading data's really been quite consistent at eighth grade, up a bit at fourth grade over the period that we've been doing state metering since 92. Reading is an area that can be misleading because this is an area where at least at the nation, you get this funny result, which is the national trend lines look fairly flat, but all the groups actually go up because the percentage of the population of Hispanic-Americans increased a lot. So you have a, what statisticians call Simpson Paradox sitting running around here. The math story is actually somewhat different, though, which is, and here, Tennessee looks a lot like the rest of the country, but you know, I feel, I worry sometimes, we focus a lot rightly on what we need to fix in education. It's not like there's an absence of good news out there and math is one of them. Which is, at least in a directional sense, math has gone up, in this case, a lot over the period in question. So from 92, if we look at grade four math, for example, Tennessee has had a 22-point improvement between 92 and 2011. And that's two-thirds of standard deviation. That, that's a lot for, you know, you see one of those effects and you're thinking, okay, that's, that's real. That's two grades worth to put it in, in, in the growth metric. And that's, that's been really interesting. Now, the dotted lines, by the way, are just because we didn't use to allow accommodations for special needs students in NAPE. So in 2000, we did, in 2000, we did a big study to sort of allow accommodations. But of course, this being a statistical program, we have to maintain officially two data points for that year. And then we ignore them because I wore essentially the same. In other words, that is one of these places where you spent a lot of time spending money to prove something didn't matter, but it was a good study. So, so reading scores are up less, a bit at eighth grade than fourth, but still up. You see this pattern repeated across the country in that. And it leads to one of the major head structures for NAPE is, and not at all at fourth grade. And if anybody could explain to me what's going on there, why this doesn't track into high school, I would love that. I just, I can't get my head around that. We're clearly seeing by any measure, the other international surveys looks like there's improvements in fourth and eighth grade that don't stretch to high school. I don't know, it's, it's a question. So here is, if we go back to the very first years when we were doing NAPE, you know, you'll see where there either was no change or a down change or up change. And the goodness here is there actually isn't a down change in, in reading, in this case. Everything's either, and in reading and math, everything's either a bit higher or the same. Here's reading score changes by group. As I mentioned, those make a difference in the overall averages. I won't go through all the numbers other than, you know, there's a pattern here where Tennessee in reading has progressed less fast than the rest of the country. So that's worth noting. Although, not necessarily than all other states. I mean, in other words, there are some states that have actually shown declines over this period in these things, and Tennessee's not one of those. Math. Here, you know, the way I eyeball this is that Tennessee looks like its surrounding states, like the rest of the country, like the rest of the. states, like the rest of the country, like the rest of the South mostly. Most of the table isn't colored. Less than some, better than others. I threw some data on, on at least NAEP data. We asked about qualification levels of teachers. These days are not always related to achievement through the NAEP, in NAEP indicator ways as much as you can see, but I thought it might be of interest to the members of the board, since I work with David and Sarah on teacher stuff. I figured, you know, sort of, why not? So, and here there's some interesting, Tennessee as a teaching force that is sort of in a funny way, compared to a lot of the other states in the region, boned at the outside. You have a lot of new teachers and a lot of old people. I don't know. I, you know, I, I won't interpret that, but you have fairly high numbers compared to other states in the twenty-plus year category, and fairly big numbers in the zero to four category. And, and, you know, we get these in teachers' reports, by the way, so we don't check. This is what the teachers have, have told us. And the percentages here are of kids, not of teachers. And that's a subtle difference. The way to read this is twenty-nine percent, twenty-four percent of students have teachers who have less than four years of experience. It's not twenty-four percent of teachers have less than four years of experience. So, you know, who went for NBPPS certification, what their highest academic degrees are. And this is for reading. Who's teaching reading to our students? Who's teaching math? Again, I won't try to go through a big and confusing tale. I just thought these might be sort of at least fun data for, for you folks to have. For whatever reason, we got a, at grade, remember, these are grades, these are grade eight data we're looking at here. The, the reading data happened to be at fourth. The math data are grade eight.
This is all students. There's not just one student participated in NAEP.
These are, these are, no, that's a good point. These are students who, these are the teachers of students who participated in NAEP. Although, we're pretty good about representative samples. So, I mean, this is going to be at fourth grade, it's essentially all your teachers in the schools that participate, which is not all schools. At eighth grade, that's actually not necessarily true. Eighth grade, you know, middle schools are bigger than elementary schools. So once we go into school, we'll grab a sample of teachers. The way we do that is if, if you as a student show up in the survey, we'll get your teacher to answer a questionnaire because we want to tie the data back together. But if, if a teacher doesn't have any sample students, they won't show up. So, so assuming always better to take some form of math or other, we'll get their math from the thirty kids we picked out of that school to do, to do NAEP. So anyway, you can have a look at what, what goes on. Eighth grade math is actually less likely than fourth grade reading to be taught by real new teachers. And, you know. And also more likely, I think, to be taught by people with higher levels of, of degrees. And again, this isn't intrinsically surprising. And again, we just put the rest of the southern region up here because we thought that would be interesting for any scientific research. So my last slides, and I know that you folks have lots of, lots of other work to do, and I, I mean, again, I, I think I'm one of the more entertaining presenters on large-scale survey matrix sample testing. Not the world's highest choir. Actually, there's, this one before I finished, a small bird walked in. A guy I worked for over years, he was wonderful. He could really have, he, he really was instrumental in getting it done in America. But he, one of these guys, and we all know him too, who, you know, could have sold ice cubes in the Arctic. And he convinced somebody after the Soviet Union fell apart that what they needed to really evolve into a democratic system was educational reform, which is a sort of sensible argument. And what they needed to do educational reform was to learn how to do NAEP, which is a weird argument, but okay. And so he got some money from these guys basically to host me on a, a speaking tour of the former Soviet Union. So I was the first and God lets up only keynote speaker at the first Central Asian Conference on large-scale matrix sample testing. January twenty-fourth, nineteen ninety-five, in Camarovo, which is for any of you who have a world map, in a city in the middle of Siberia. So they took me to January in Siberia to speak about assessments. And it was, and also Camarovo, one of the reasons you haven't heard of it is it's not that nice. It's sort of like, it's a whole mining center. It's the Scranton of central Asian countries. They, they want a contest to host this, this conference. And, you know, and, but of course, it's Siberia, so the best they could do for a keynote speaker was me, you know. So if you want to have a keynote speaker on this town, you're dying.
Dave, I'm sure you go hear from the folks in Scranton.
That's the vice president's hometown.
I'm sorry. Oh, God. Anyway, the, the, what are challenges that are facing me? What I'm, I still, among my, my current job is vice president of student and teacher assessments. I teach your stuff. I do the state programs. We do it in our work for the consortium. But I also still do NAEP. Once you've learned this stuff, they don't ever let you out. I've been various ways trying to move you out of it. Because it's, because who else would want to learn this stuff? But it's fun. So what am I worried about mostly now? And, you know, we're in the process of trying to win a new contract, and if we're lucky enough to do so. Well, one, we got to improve technology. I think NAEP needs to think about its role in the Common Core State Standards. The Common Core State Standards change a lot of things. It changes the way NAEP's going to have to work and going to have to perform. I think we have to learn to deliver new and different kinds of information. I'm not sure those sorts of data I showed you are all NAEP ought to be working on. And I actually think we got to worry about efficiency. You know, by federal expenditure standards, NAEP is a big expensive testing program, but it's like one wing of an F-15 or something like that. So, but, you know, even the federal surveys are going to have to learn to do more with less. The, the days when you didn't have to worry about that as, as federal program, I think, behind, I'm not sure everybody in the Department of Ed agrees with me yet, but, but I know I'm right, so. Technology delivery, well, I actually just gave, there was a future of NAEP conference in DC the other day, and I gave up to talk about this. I think the worst thing we can do, especially on NAEP, is use computers to deliver the same sorts of questions we've been given on paper. We have got to do more and better for a couple of reasons. One, there's a bunch of stuff we always wished we could test, that NAEP's a perfect place to test, but we couldn't in pencil and paper. Research skills. Research is something, it was impossible to test in a pencil and paper setting. In a computer environment, it's easy. You can put reference materials online. You can let kids search safe parts of the least of the internet. You can have, you can work on science experiments, you can, that really involve real ingredients because you don't worry about kids choking if you are willing to simulate them. You can use audio, video, visual stimulus as part of history tests and not limit yourself to what can be printed. You can use colors as part of geography. Color's an important part of the way apples. All that stuff can be done, and if we only take what we printed in books and stick it on a computer, we have missed a point. We missed a point for a second reason, which is what it means to know and be able to do these things has changed with the technology. Not just, we wanted to do some stuff, now we can. The stuff we need to worry about has changed. So here's an experiment. So I'm going to ask, somebody raise your hands and keep your, your hands up. How many of you, board members, anybody else in the room, has had to write a document of, over a page or so in the last year? Keep your hands up. Okay, now, all of you who wrote it in longhand, put your hands up. I write a lot. I haven't written anything with a pad and a pen since grad school, essentially. And I don't know if I could anymore. I don't think you would get the right estimate of my writing ability. For one thing, I, I would get cramps in my hand, and therefore, my writing would be, would be concise and to the point, not long and overblown like it is on the computer. The important answer is you'd get the wrong impressions of my writing abilities. Furthermore, I think being able to use the computer is more and more not even just a vehicle for recording your writing, it's actually part of writing. We expect people to use tables for graphics. It's part of communication right now. It's not separate from communication. At some point, is somebody going to be able to, are we going to say somebody knows and is able to do math if they can't use some version of spreadsheet functionality moving forward? Perhaps not. So we got to learn to test that stuff. I think NAEP's got to learn to do adaptive testing. I think that right now in NAEP, we give a lot of kids questions that are very, very hard, that are probably a very unpleasant experience. And our measurement of lower-performing student populations is not as good as it should be. We can make it better. But we got to figure out how adaptive testing works in a group score environment. The beauty of adaptive testing, if you're a testing guy, is it gets you real, individual scores real efficiently. We don't want individual scores. So how you work this with groups? Do you really want to take a jurisdiction and one of, not like you guys, but one of the really low-performing jurisdictions and not let them get any of the advanced items on the assessment? Probably not. That's a political thing, but anything else, they have to figure out how to do it.
Steve, we're running short on time. We're going to need to wrap up here pretty quickly.
So, well, I won't control this. We need to control closely to provide process information, computers, report movements. Hey, let's just see how kids answered questions, not just what they answered. But we don't have to analyze that stuff yet. Does NAEP align with the Common Core State Standards? Our governing board in NAEP decides that stuff. They haven't yet. Remember, there are significant chunks of the country.
What's, what's your opinion on that? That's obviously.
Yeah, that's, that's, it's too big a policy question, but I'll tell you one thing, which is there are two large states, one very large state that aren't in. And that's a problem for NAEP. NAEP remains a national survey, so Texas and Virginia and the other states that you, they have to think about. I am, I think, this is one of my few cop out answers. I think I'm glad I don't have to make the decision. I, I think that, but I think in the end, some amount of alignment must be done, or NAEP will not be a good independent audit on the results to come out of Park as part of balance. So I think they have to do at least some.
I think, you know, most of the staff on the, the NAEP staff believes that there is good alignment, but.
There is and there isn't. The ELA thing's a big deal. The fact that we have reading and writing tests versus an integrated ELA test, they, they're going to have to address that somewhere. So anyway, like I said, we need to learn more about learning processes, efficiency, and the issue of efficiency on stuff. And so I gave it such a plan for about an hour and a quarter. I almost made it, so thank you. Yes.
Question. How are schools picked and how are students in schools picked?
Great, great question. So here's the answer, which is the, we have a sample size we want, which is about three thousand students per grade per subject if we're not picking district samples. To get that overall sample size, what we do is a company called Weststaff who specializes in this creates a list of all schools in the state. They get this from the federal government, but also from you folks. You augment it, make sure we have all the open schools. And they weight those schools by the school size. So, and then they assign schools a selection probability, is a fancy way to say it, and give them a higher chance to be picked, if they're a big school than they're a small school. Once they've set up those probabilities, there's a random draw of schools where they're going to get a hundred schools in a state to yield those three thousand students. For efficiency reasons, force ourselves to pick thirty kids per school. Within school, we simply take a list of all students and take a random draw of students in the, in the, in the grade affect. A purely random draw. And we, we do, we work very hard to make sure it's really all students, that, you know, and everybody, students with IEPs, students with, quote, four destinations. Nobody gets off the list if we can help them. Now, they're not all assessed, obviously, but, but they're all in the sample. So good question.
Great.
I hope they remember.
Other questions?
I, I got one quick. On, on NAEP, there's not a cut score. On Park, will there be a cut score?
Yeah, what do you mean there's not a cut score on NAEP? Because they do do proficient.
Yeah, there are.
Yeah, 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 there's got to be. All right. So there's one thing about testing the same material. It's another thing on, like where you set proficient and basic that could or could not align with states just based on that. Now, who makes that call from your own, when you were talking about, does it align? Does it align with Common Core? Does the assessments align?
So, I mean, where the, where the passing scores are set, where the cuts scores are set for the distortion assessment, in NAEP, it's set by the National Assessment Governing Board. They've had contracts in the past with either ACP or Measure Progress to do this, to run studies, to set the cuts. Park, passing scores are going to be set by Park States, working together and agreeing on stuff. And yeah, if they are different than NAEP cuts, that'll be at, at least an explanatory issue for, for people. I don't, I, I mean, I'm not as familiar, the commissioner may be more. I don't remember exactly what Park and Smarter are planning, even in terms of number of levels. I think maybe it's five for Park, but I could have that wrong.
I think it's four.
Four. So it's NAEP-like. It's, oh, but I think, but they'll have something, like NAEP, there's three, but then there's below basic. I think Park, there's four and below one or something. So it's a great question. It's something worth worrying about. I don't have an answer.
So Commissioner, we just, I have a clarifying question on that. On the Park States and where the cuts scores are set, will they be consistent across states?
Yes.
Okay, great, nice.
Yeah, and my, you know, I think my, my thing is, I worry less about, you know, you can look at NAEP and see where the proficiency levels are, and it's different than our state standards, anyone else's state standards. I view NAEP, though, as an opportunity to measure ourselves against other states. So I think about it more from a competitive perspective. And so to me, it's less a question of which percent, what percentage of our kids are, you know, basic or below basic. It's worrisome to me when we are forty-sixth and fourth grade in math, and when, you know, our white kids are a full year behind the national average of white kids, and our black kids are a full year behind the national average of black kids. So I view it more as a comparative thing to other states rather than comparative across paths.
Great. Well, thank you so much for, for the invitation and for taking this time. David and Gary, thank you for inviting me.
Steve, appreciate you being here. I am on the National Assessment Governing Board, so if you like NAEP, let me know about it. If you don't, don't, don't have a vote.
So I'll see you in a couple of weeks, I suppose, in, in DC.
So if you've got questions, don't ask me if you've got suggestions. So maybe that's more of a vote. Thank to the, the NAEP for the National Assessment.
Thank you again so much.
Steve, do appreciate it. I want you all to notice David with a beard and new glasses and so forth. You know.
Thanks to Dr. Roswell.
I mean.
She delivered a dizzle.
Yeah, I trimmed her beard.
Is she, yeah.
Oh, they're talking about improved image. I mean, take it. Okay.
I have a long way to go.
Yeah, she looks like a grownup.
I'll take that. Your beard was a bit too much.
That's like grown up. Okay, next subject. Teacher evaluation, the license standards, and instructional leadership. Sarah, are you going to?
Yes, and if it's all right with you, Chairman, we'll probably just sit right here.
Okay.
Quickly, but, and please, last, our size and get the handouts.
Chairman, these are actually my first bifocals. So once the nausea subsides, I'll be much more effective staffing.
All right, well, we can kind, I know we're, we're short on time today, so we can go ahead and get started even while we're kind of getting the slides set up. And a couple of things for coming around to you. Good afternoon, good to see you all. We've got a number of things just to touch on with you today from the teachers and leaders team. Several things that are on the action items for tomorrow's meeting, and then several updates specifically on teacher evaluation, kind of where we are mid-year in our second year of implementation. So before we get into the, the updates, I wanted to introduce two new staff members who are here and sitting behind David. Since Vance Regard's retirement late last fall, Halliday Douglas, if you want to stand up and just wave at folks, has now come on board as our director of the Office of Educator Licensing. So we're thrilled to have him and excited for the work that he's doing with that team. And next to Halliday, Michael Derline, also very exciting new addition to the team, just came from New York City. He has a wife who's expecting their first child in just a couple of weeks, so they're going to lose him for a little bit of time. But he's working closely with Amy Wooton as the director of analytic strategy, and in that role, working specifically on our leader prep and thinking about the next phase of leadership preparation in Tennessee, how we do approval, working with Paul as well, and some of the licensure-related work under the leadership bucket. So two new additions and new faces for you to know. While they're getting slides set up, there's, I want to start with the action items, and you should have this in front of you, but I wanted to talk first about the preparation programs that are up for state board action. programs that are up for state board action. If you'll look there in your packet, there's four programs that are coming to you for action. Three of them, Carson Newman, Maryville, and South, are all recommended for full continuing approval. So, there was nothing of note in those three, other than they are all up for approval. Having gone through the full cycle of the visits and the advisory committee review, we recommend that those be continued in their full approval. The one of note is Lane College, which we are recommending for denial of approval, and this is something I've spoken to several of you about already, but the last full visit at Lane College by the Board of Examiners was in 2008. And that kind of triggered a series of next steps that resulted in the action that we're recommending today to deny approval to their teacher ed unit. And that included two focus visits since 2008 to focus on the kind of the critical deficiencies that were noted in the Board of Examiner's visit back in 2008. Through those focus visits and the attempts to address the critical deficiencies, and then further review by what we call the Commissioner's Advisory Committee, who reviews the work of both the Board of Examiners and kind of checks the thinking of the department staff, there were still critical deficiencies that remained, which resulted in the missing two of the six standards. So, there's two that are still unmet, and it feels see in your packet, that's the candidate knowledge, skills, and professional disposition, as well as the assessment systems and unit evaluation, which are two pretty critical standards, in our opinion. So, in any case, Lane was notified of this recommendation back in December. It had 30 days in which to submit an appeal. To our knowledge, they have not submitted an appeal, so this is, again, our recommendation that they be denied approval, which, if you look at the last page of the packet on the program approval slate, there's five things that that means essentially. The biggest is that they will not be able to recommend candidates for licensure effective immediately, other than those who are six months away from graduating. So, those folks that are in their program that are six months away or less will be able to complete their program. Anyone else will need to transfer to another institution. Their numbers are extremely small. I think they have less than 20 people in their program currently. So, this is not gonna have a major impact on many individuals, but it will also mean that they have to wait at least three years before reapplying to get back into the teacher prep business. So, again, this is something we take seriously and certainly are open to any questions that you have. Martin Nash, who knows much more about this than I do and is in the weeds on this day to day, can answer any questions as well, but wanted to draw that one to your attention.
Okay.
Any questions on that? Okay. The other related, just very brief update on licensure and program approval, we've heard your call to action to study both the way that we approve programs in Tennessee as well as how we issue licenses in Tennessee, and we're continuing that study. We are still planning to bring you some recommendations on that study and the changes that we see needed, both in licensure and program approval later this year, hopefully in April or soon after that, at one of your next meetings before the summer. So, just know that that work continues, and there'll be much more coming on that here in a few months. Otherwise, I wanted to jump right into the team update, and you should have, I hope, with the handouts on, no, the data particularly. You should have a couple of things on, handouts in terms of data from mid-year results on team. And before we look at those, just a couple of things to note in terms of what's been happening in year two from the department perspective. We have what we call our team coaches, who have been deployed across the state regionally, working through the offices that our core centers operate. And those folks have been focused in first semester really on our, what we call support schools, which were those that were identified last year at the end of the year, based on the results as being significantly misaligned. And those schools have been working with the core, with the team coaches in the first semester, and we'll look at the data, but we've been really pleased to see the results of their work in these schools, and I think that those seem to be making a difference in the support schools. In second semester, we're broadening the scope of their work. So, those five coaches in the first semester, like I said, were focused primarily on those 72 schools that were identified as most misaligned. But this second semester, they're doing a number of things to support more broadly implementation of evaluation. So, one, one thing that we think is really important are these optional kind of norming and feedback sessions. So, for principals particularly, who are really struggling still to get the observations normed appropriately across their evaluator teams, and then more than that almost, you know, what kind of feedback does a certain kind of observation score require based on what indicators? What are the things that the principal should be recommending as next steps for teachers? So, the team coaches have been asked to do that in a number of cases in first semester, and now are kind of formalizing that, that support activity through these optional sessions happening regionally. So, that's going on across the state. We're also continuing to work through the study councils, so both the superintendent supervisors and principal study councils get regular updates and have dialogues ongoing through the regional centers as well about evaluation. And then we've also been able to continue to support kind of indicator-specific professional development for teachers and leaders through our team coaches. They've been working with the core offices, with, again, the study councils about what that starts to look like, what resources are available through NIET portal and otherwise across the state to make sure that folks know what, what they can be recommending in the way of professional development based on evaluation. Any questions on that?
Just one question. I think that's great about the, the impact of the coaches that have been working with the different schools and the districts. What happens next year, I guess, if you continue to see the misalignment? What actions will be taken by the state?
That's a, that's a great, and so, in the policy, again, that you all passed, you know, they will be, the evaluator specifically, of schools that are on the list for two years, will have to go back through a full training, not just the recert training, but the four full days. That'll include some of these, what are now optional kind of sessions. But if we continue to see the misalignment in these schools particularly, there'll be additional training required of those folks. And in the case of the alternate models, they'll lose their ability to use those alt models if, again, they are significantly misaligned. And we're gonna talk about Hamilton County in just a minute, which had been on notice, but they're now actually off notice because of some information that we'll talk through, but that's the basics. Other questions on that? Okay, well, look with me, if you will, for just a minute at the handout that you have in front of you on the mid-year data report. Again, you can see there... Yeah, thank you, that's what I see. Okay, so you'll see there, on the first line, the mid-year scores for 1213. So, this is observation scores as of, I think, about January 4th of 2013, so basically first semester. And you'll see, we're starting to see a little bit better spread as compared to where we were, again, in 1112 at the end of the year. That's just observation scores there. A slight uptick in the threes, a slight uptick in the twos, a slight uptick in the fours, or sorry, in the fives, and a slight downtick in the fours. So, you can see that it's not totally dissimilar from last year, there's a little bit more spread. But what we think is, more note is that the support schools, again, those that were most misaligned last year, so that third line down, you'll see have a much better alignment in terms of the spread between the ones and the fives. So, we're starting to see more differentiation, again, where there's been some more targeted support in those support schools. And then that last line, again, you'll see the individual T-BOSS scores across the state from 1112. We still have a ways to go in terms of really addressing teachers that are at the lowest end of the performance spectrum. 16% again, last year, were ones on T-BOSS. And so, a lot of our work in year two has been to try to help folks, you know, find the ways to have those critical coaching conversations at the beginning of the year with teachers who were underperforming last year. We've actually just sent out a survey, if you want to flip to the next slide, that went out specifically to those teachers who scored ones last year, again, to make sure that they're getting the kind of feedback that's gonna help them improve. One of the things that's concerning, where you see that the misalignment between the observation and the T-BOSS, is that it means that those teachers are really getting mixed messages. You know, they're being told by their evaluators and their principals, in many cases, that everything is fine, and then the student results tell a very different picture. So, this survey, we think, will be important in helping directors really get a handle on, you know, the quality of feedback that different school evaluators are providing, and to ensure that all teachers are really getting kind of the critical feedback that will help them improve practice. So, we've been pretty pleased, the survey has not been open very long, but you'll see we have close to 2,000 folks who have responded. Most of, let's see, there are about 8,000 folks that got the survey, teachers. 2,000 of those were ones, and then we did a kind of sampling of both fives and kind of other teachers as well, so we can have some comparison as well across the spectrum. And, and like it says there, those reports will be shared with directors primarily to help them both support and kind of assist their, their management from the district level. All districts, you have a sample district report as well.
Sir, before you move, can I ask a quick question?
Sure, yeah, and stop, I'm trying to go quickly, but stop me at any point.
So, you mentioned the, the misalignment piece, like, maybe one or two on your value add scores and five on your observations, but are you seeing any other way, or is that almost non-existent?
It's almost non-existent.
Okay.
Well, I'm glad you asked that, though, David, because one other thing I wanted to note is that, what's actually interesting is when you take out the ones on T-BOSS, our alignment actually looks really good. So, it's, it's, the hardest thing that folks are dealing with is getting that critical feedback to the folks that, that are kind of on the, the lower end of student results, that really, you know, beyond that, the alignment is, is pretty good and, and matches what we're seeing in terms of student results. Yeah, but...
One thing, one thing that I would add is, you know, and this will come up before the board next summer when we look at how to make changes, there are various components of the team, qualitative piece, and instruction is one piece, and then planning is another one, and environment is another one. If you just look at instruction, which is, you know, sort of the heart of the observation model, the average observation scores are hovering around a 3.7. The average value added scores were about 3.4. So, they're not terribly far off. We're getting to the point where what people are saying about instruction and what the results are showing are coming closer together. The, the gap between the 3.4 and 3.7 is entirely attributable to overinflation for the teachers who are ones in value added scores. The average observation score last year, I don't know what, what we saw for first semester, if we've even run it, but for last year, the average teacher who was a one on value added score was a 3.65 on their observation scores. And so, if we, we just believe, first of all, we have to address this because we need those teachers to improve, and we have to get them feedback. But for the model itself, if we can address that one key thing, we solve the majority of the challenges that we have in, in bringing everything into alignment.
Yeah. Yep, that's great. Any questions about that or the mid-year data? Again, the sample district and sample school, these are the reports that are going out currently through our core offices, again, to directors, informing them of where their districts and schools within their district fall in terms of mid-year observation data. We've tried to give them all the relevant kind of data points so they can see how that compares to where they were last year, what their T-BOSS scores are, so they can continue to manage from their perspective the quality of feedback.
Can I add one other thing? And we're, you know, the ones, the survey is just coming back, and so, we'll have a full report, and so, I'm probably stepping on our future punchline. I would say it's been disconcerting that several teachers have emailed to say, you've made a mistake, I'm not a one. And, in fact, when we went and checked, they are, which means that literally their principal had not sat down and had a conversation with them about the fact that they had received a one in value added scores.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and, yeah, again, we'll have...
It's hard to imagine how you would get better if nobody is talking to you about getting better.
Right. And again, the overall score would mask that, you know, unless they're going to the T-BOSS site or they've had a conversation with their principal, you know, their observations.
So, will this start to show up when we, we start to see, when the principal evaluations start to be tracked more as to how they perform and communicate?
Absolutely. And Paul's actually gonna speak to that a bit, because one of the action items that you have in front of you is the revised skills, and we want to revise principal evaluation. You know, there's some component in there now currently that focuses on the quality of teacher evaluation, but we know there's a lot more we need to do to really reinforce this through the principal evaluation, that, you know, this is a, a primary charge of an evaluator, of a principal.
Yeah, we're looking to make that much more prominent in the administrative evaluation department.
Yeah, so we'll come back to that.
How many, how many, what's the breakdown of principals that do the evaluation versus outside people that come in and do the evaluation?
I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but in, in most every case, the principal is, I mean, they are the ones primarily responsible for evaluation, so the summative conversation and evaluation scores is up to them. You know, in most cases, assistant principals, if they exist and give them, also do the evaluation. And then, you know, it's a limited number of districts that are using kind of district level staff, some districts using some peer evaluators, particularly the high school level.
Yeah, because I wouldn't want a principal to be a hotness score or somebody, or an outside evaluator doing something that he didn't really...
Yeah. No, it's very, I mean, you know, in those cases, I think it's really incumbent upon the districts to make sure that everything, you know, that they're looking across their evaluators, but there's not many districts that are using district level staff, and where they are, you know, I think they just have to be working pretty tightly together and recognize the need to norm together as a evaluation team. Okay, next, can you word please? Couple other things I wanted to mention. We're really excited this year as well to be piloting two important things, both of which are highlighted in the recent NET findings that we'll talk about in just a second briefly, student surveys and video technology. Some of you know, we have some money through the Gates Foundation, and we're using that to pilot the student surveys, which was developed out of Harvard and has been used in Memphis in their model this past year across 18 districts in the state. So, those folks are, are using that this spring to pilot the student survey. There's a lot that goes into that. It's essentially like administering another state test because of all the logistics and the rostering and the, the kind of, the details that are involved. So, we're excited to pilot that this spring with these districts, and then those that choose to continue using it next year would use it at 5%, again, like you have approved in the Memphis model. So, right now, it's not evaluated to, next year, it would be at 5%. But we'll talk more about that in just a minute, because the, the NET findings really indicate that this is something that we want to watch and continue to, to see how districts are able to incorporate that into their models. We're also providing video technology in the form of these kind of 360-degree cameras in 60 schools across 19 districts, and they're receiving those cameras later in February, but the, the uses are pretty limitless. I mean, they, they can really provide a way to do self-reflection for teachers, look at their lessons after they have taught, to, to reflect on what went well. They can be useful in this kind of observation norming, you know, so cross evaluators being able to look at a lesson together and, and discuss the scoring of that particular lesson. They can take the place of announced observations. In some cases, you know, again, you can use that video as, quote unquote, the announced observation and, and eliminate some of the, the class time that an evaluator would have to spend with teachers. And then it's another PD resource. I mean, there's, there's all kinds of things that you can imagine around effective practices being shared more widely, particularly from school to school, district to district, that can really, I think, advance our ability to provide good development for all teachers.
We're doing that in Memphis.
Yeah, yeah, we're excited. These cameras, they're just pretty incredible, and the technology is moving really quickly. So, we're, we're hopeful that we'll learn a lot from both the student survey pilot and the video technology. Okay, so, just quickly, I mentioned the NET findings. I know most of you are familiar with the study that, again, Gates Foundation has funded, but the last research report came out recently. A group of us went out to Phoenix for the, the release of those findings, and, and a couple of things of note, you can read in much more detail on their website, but the first seems like an obvious one, but in terms of research validating this, it's actually quite new and important. They found that there is a causal relationship between teachers with greater measured effectiveness and increased student achievement. And essentially, what that means is that it's possible to measure teacher effectiveness in a way that really correlates to student achievement, so that we can start to help our teachers understand what those measures are that can really demonstrably improve student achievement. So, that's, that's important. The second is that multiple measures of effectiveness, including the student surveys that we mentioned, and this is the same version, the student survey that we're piloting, make evaluations more reliable. And the data's pretty clear. The next point speaks to that as well, but the student perception surveys in the studies that they did, which were widespread across a number of districts and around the United States, are more predictive of student growth actually than observations. And if you think about it, again, it's better than students. I mean, they're in there every day. If you can, if you can find the right tool that, you know, eliminates the bias and kind of the, the personal piece of the teacher and the student relationship, and really get at what's happening in the classroom, which is what the student survey attempts to do, it's, it's actually highly reliable and predictive of student growth. And then lastly, this is also important, a second observer, they found, increases the reliability significantly more than having just the same observer score an additional lesson. So, this power in having multiple observers really came through in the findings, and is something that we want to think about in terms of how we work with districts and how we set kind of the requirements for observations, but, but that was also important. Again, there's much more about the findings on their, the Gates kind of NET project homepage, but if there's any questions about those, I'm happy to take any, or we can keep trucking. Any questions? Okay. Last thing on, in terms of team updates, just a, a brief preview of kind of where we're headed this year and what you might expect to see in April. We're working with Emily Barton's team, the Curriculum Instruction Division, to think about what kind of small tweaks we might need to make to the rubric to make sure that it's really aligned with Common Core. You know, broadly speaking, we have not found that the Common Core and kind of the evaluation are, are in conflict with one another. They really actually are pretty mutually enforcing in terms of raising the expectations for instruction through team and, you know, what is essentially content agnostic, but then Common Core really providing the what in terms of high-quality content and curriculum. So again, what we would do is just in the small places where there's some language changes that need to be adjusted to make sure that, you know, the shifts in Common Core are really reflected in the team evaluation rubric, we would make that for next year, but it would be, you know, mild level changes. And then secondly, any further adjustments to the observation process? Again, thinking about the research that we just touched on from the NET study and year two input from teachers and directors and principals, there may be some minor adjustments again to kind of further tailor the types of observation requirements for different teachers in the state. And then Paul will speak to this and Mike had a great question about the administrator evaluation. That really is where we want to focus a lot of our energy moving into the summer around training and kind of revamping the tools and related policies for principal evaluation. So Paul's going to speak to that in just a minute. All right, that's all on team. I did realize I kind of got out of order. I had two other, just the action items to draw your attention to, related to evaluation. Hamilton County, again, I mentioned, had been put on notice for kind of having what we thought were highly inflated scores from year one. Stacy Sturts here, I believe, back there from Hamilton County, and can speak to this as well. But as we've looked into that with Hamilton County, what we discovered is it was not really an issue with the scores themselves, but it was the conversion methodology. They, coaches on a four-point scale, the team reporting requires a five-point scale. And so the conversion methodology, when we kind of broke it out and looked at what was happening, was really why we saw such inflated scores in Hamilton County last year or appeared to be highly inflated. So we've worked collaboratively with Hamilton County to look at that methodology, to address it and change it so that, again, what Hamilton County is looking at on a four-point scale is much more in line with the kind of the scaling that is required for the five-point reporting. And that will be applied this year pending, again, your approval through the action item tomorrow. Following the meeting tomorrow, Hamilton County and the department are working together to send out a communication to teachers in Hamilton County. We don't anticipate this will be an issue. They, for the most part, have looked at the scores as Hamilton County had shared them, which was on the four-point scale. And so I don't think there's going to be a whole lot of confusion, but we've been working closely with them to make sure that their communication goes out. And that also means that they would no longer be on notice in terms of a high rate of misalignment.
Is this, is the new conversion a long-term fix or are we doing anything to change the coach system so it really comes out bad?
No, and Stacy can speak to this. They're going to continue with a four-point scale. This is really just about the conversion. You know, Tiger is actually also a four-point scale and so they have a similar conversion. We did have the issue there and I think it was really more about the methodology of converting from one scale to the other.
Awesome.
Okay, then I think that is all for me. I'm going to turn over to Paul and talk to you a little bit about the revised TILs and some of the leadership work.
Yeah, thank you, Sarah. And I think at the last work session, I shared the timeline and Luke, you go to that for the revision of our leadership standards and happy to report that we have completed that timeline for gathering input and research and feedback from various groups across the state from August until just December. And that would include our TASSL cohorts, our regained principals, assistant principals, supervisors, the new leaders group that does a lot of leadership work in Memphis, SCORE, THEC, Principal Study Council, and Supervisor Study Council, as well as the GAIN Superintendent's Academy, all to give feedback for the revision of our leadership standards. In November, we did do an online survey for all assistant principals, principals, supervisors, and superintendents, and also our representatives from the 19 Leadership Prep Programs, and happy that we had a pretty decent response, especially we had actually 30 directors of schools that were giving a lot of feedback, which that was nice as well, as well as a significant number of principals. Over 90% were either strongly agreeing or agreeing with the intent and the content of the leadership standards, which also was good in our revision of the standards. And then we also met with the deans from the Leadership Prep Programs at a THEC sponsored meeting in December as well for their feedback. So I have hard copies here as well that I know you have one in there, but just wanted to give you a very brief highlight of the, some of the additions in the revision to the 2013 TILs. We have added a preamble-
This is the item 3F.
Yeah. There was an addition of a preamble to give context and examples of an ethical and effective leader, because in the existing TIL that was passed in 2008, there was a standard on ethics, but both in research and in practice, there's a strong belief that ethics and effectiveness permeate all of the standards across all of those. And so that was it, putting that in the preamble, but also spell it out and give some examples of what an ethical and effective leader. It's also then in the stem of every standard to talk about that ethical and effectiveness is important for instructional leadership. A strong emphasis on college and career readiness through the Common Core and aligned, or through curriculum that's rigorous and aligned with national standards, including Common Core, and making sure that's embedded. Also, really emphasizing the evaluation system, using an improved evaluation model. And this will go back to, as we continue work on the principal evaluation rubric, to make sure that's important about the fidelity and implementation and the feedback, as we heard, especially with our Level One teachers and making sure they get that timely feedback. These last two bullets are, I think, are also particularly innovative because right now across the nation, as we all know, teaching effectiveness is the biggest determinant on student achievement. And so there's an emphasis in the standard C about induction, supporting, retaining, and growing strong teachers in your building and your district that often we're not seeing right now at the national level, in state standards, state leadership standards. One of the challenges we had just briefly was with 136 districts, we didn't want to put in specific language about recruitment and hiring because there still is a variation on the building level principal to have that power. We didn't want them to be penalized, per se, if they didn't have that direct power. So the emphasis is really on induction, once they're in your building, about that support and also about growing teachers, both within your building and then also if they're being promoted, not necessarily even for leadership, but even to other schools and making sure that language is there.
It's a strong coaching.
Exactly.
And management, you know, there wasn't a link to that in our other-
Right, really putting a primary emphasis on that. And that's also echoed in the last bullet about, you know, as the board adopted in 2011 both the teacher leader standards, the national teacher leader standards, and also the standards for professional learning. And so those are both embedded in the revised TILs. One, to put that on the radar for districts to really be aware that they are there. And two, to start being very intentional about developing strong teachers and then developing professional learning systems to support those teachers as well. So we feel that that's going to be, hopefully moving the needle in some very significant ways for districts and for individual building. Yeah, so I think those were kind of the high-level changes that you'll see. There's a, there were a couple, I have a hard copy because there were a couple of minor adjustments that are, don't think are in your version. And one is just in the preamble about, we added a phrase about continuous improvement and making sure that this is in the sphere of continuous improvement, which is, I believe, is not listed in that piece. And there was a second change about, as we talk about teacher leadership and the idea of retaining strong teachers, to just take out the word promote and put in the word grow and extend, because we found that promote was often taken literally, like we're going to promote you to a leadership position, when in reality, they might be, as you mentioned, shifted to another school for coaching purposes. We didn't want that to be as well. So that's, that's where we are with this, with this submission for the first reading on leadership standards and to have that. Very quickly, another initiative that has launched is our Ten Leaf Grant, which is really a pipeline grant to encourage districts and institutions of higher ed and also nonprofits to either develop or replicate innovative and high-impact programs for recruiting and developing future principals, since we know that leadership is the second greatest determinant on student achievement, next to teaching. So what's exciting is we're already getting a lot of interest with the Ten Leaf Grant between districts that are partnering, between districts and higher ed, between nonprofits and higher ed and districts, and our core offices to do that. So a lot of interest and that's happening in the next six weeks with the application process. Individual proposals will be funded with a race to the top fund between those amounts of $250,000 or $1,000,000. But we are trying to really grow the pipeline of leaders, but to do it in a way that recognizes the regional differences, regional needs, and that's a way that we're going to do that. I think the final slide is going back to the, how we want to reposition the administrator evaluation rubric. We wouldn't be changing anything about the performance levels. This year's rubric, as you see, has a five level, a level three, and a level one. But we also want to just make sure in format that the standard is listed, and this is just a draft, like over on the left, that would be the first TIL standard on the far left. It would have the indicators as an example. And then at the bottom, we see this now happening across the country, is really being specific about specific artifacts and levels of evidence that supervisors can use when they're talking to principals and principals can use when talking to their teachers. And this would just be an example of some of examples that, of artifacts that can be used to give really specific feedback to principals to help with performance. And that would be just in a formatting sense for each standard, you would have those examples of artifacts that we covered. So this is where we're heading, as Sarah mentioned, with the evaluation rubric for the spring. And we'll follow a similar process of looking at national models, creating a draft, and then putting that out to our various stakeholders for input and revisions to go forward.
And build out the training additionally.
Right.
We know, again, as we kind of move forward with teacher evaluation, we did kind of a minimal effort, I think, on principal evaluation. In part, it was a capacity issue, but we recognized that this is really the time to move the ball forward on principal evaluation. As Paul said, you know, it's timely because the standards are changing as we speak and so we want to reflect those new standards in the new evaluation rubric. And then we also want to take this opportunity to really kind of do the training in a way that we think will be more effective and the follow-up support activities associated with that. So that's still in process.
Right, we'll look for that for this summer, however, revise that training.
Okay. Great.
I guess I have a comment and a ten-minute question, and one I think you've done a great job with Robison and Sturts. I mean, I particularly like, there are fewer, more relevant.
Right.
There's a clear focus on instructional leadership and I think it'll really go as well down the road as we go to the evaluation. You know, now we have the report card for teacher prep institutions. Will be, as we're moving to this evaluation, these new standards, will we also be including leadership prep in that report card going forward?
It's a great question, absolutely. And I think THEC is going to speak to a little bit of where they are with the current kind of iterations of the report cards and the leader report card kind of being the next thing that they're looking at. But, you know, as we think about program approval and teacher prep and leader prep, yes, absolutely, that will be part of the continuing reporting.
And all outcome-driven.
Yeah, much more outcome-driven right now, yeah.
Great job.
Hey, others, other questions for Paul or Sarah or anything that they've covered here? Yeah, I would certainly would agree with Marissa. I think the TILs document is really well done. It's short, I like that. It's very focused.
It was present.
And it's well-written and I was going to say all that before you started handing out revisions to it, but that-
It's minor, but we realized that the final, final version was not what actually got into your package, so we just wanted to make sure you had that.
Other questions for-
Can I ask about that, just from a procedural standpoint? So tomorrow, you'll vote on what's in, I'm asking, you'll vote on what's in the packet and this will be what we submitted for April without the word draft?
Right, and we can still, yeah, that will be the final kind of-
I think that's probably the easiest way to do it.
Yeah, which is what, I mean, we do that typically, sometimes there's some minor changes.
Sure, absolutely.
So that'll work, I think. Yeah.
Okay, good point. Any other items? Good work. Yep. Okay, let me remind you that we do have a hard stop here at 2:15 so we can go to the going meeting with THEC. Want to cover questions that are on the agenda for tomorrow? First of all, I hope that you had a good chance to look at the master plan. We got in there, we've kind of been working on that diligently for the last year, refining numbers and so forth. I think we've got it in good shape now. I think we all recognize that a lot of these numbers that we've got in there, the objectives, are very aspirational and we're expecting great things to happen. We certainly are going to be real happy when it all happens, so. It is a, I think, a major step forward in trying to define really what our expectations are and that they are very aspirational. So I'm hoping you all had a chance to look at that and are comfortable with those numbers and the work that we've done over the last year with department on those, make sure it's satisfactory. We are not going to have a chance to talk in detail about RTI. I know some folks have raised some questions about that. We have, let me make sure everybody understands, we've moved it to first reading, so we'll have plenty of opportunity between now and the April meeting for any additional input that you have on the recommendation there about going to RTI, requiring RTI. And as part of that, we've also moved the item that we've got on final reading. It's the item, call it another-
4E.
4B?
B.
4E. We're going to remove that from the agenda tomorrow and put it on the April meeting so we can handle both of these items at the April meeting. It's moving from 60, from 45 school days to the 60 calendar day. So we'll remove that from the agenda and put it on the, for final reading, April meeting so we can handle these two things same time in the April meeting.
Do you have a second add-on to RTI discussion? I think it will be a public hearing.
Yeah.
And we'll be gathered there and have a chance to review that.
Can we have information at the workshop? Will we have workshop time next time?
Yes.
Okay. Around the workshop.
About an hour.
Yeah. Also, Kathleen has prepared, I think she's handed out this to everybody, some additional information here on RTI, actually, what it is, what we're doing and so forth, which I think will be helpful for you to review that slides and so what we've been putting together to understand, make sure we understand that issue before we move forward with the final meeting in April. Okay, other, other questions that you have also, I think everybody's got some replacement pages for some of the material for tomorrow reading and hope you've got those and get those in your notebook for tomorrow reading. Okay, other questions that you have about the agenda tomorrow, Carol?
Well, this really, I don't think it's about the agenda, but we've been getting information, I mean, lots of communication about geography and social studies, so just go over with us when that is going to be coming to us.
Okay, who can address that?
The social studies standards.
It's my understanding that you will have a recommendation for first reading.
I'm, I'm, sidebar.
The social studies reorganization.
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Hey, other, other, other questions? Okay, you're good.
One I saw, Didel and I have, Didel did the majority of this work here, good work. Folder with some of the active legislative bills that are being proposed so far this session, so none of these have been passed, they're just the ones that are proposed. So right inside the cover, you got the yellow dot here with the six of them that we think are sort of pertinent, on point, likely to get some movement.
Happy to talk about any of them if you'd like. Of course, you've probably heard about the governor's proposal for opportunity scholarships and, so mainly we're just looking at the state board's involvement and with that, we'll just be promulgating rules that help to carry that out if the bill is passed. In addition, there is a parent trigger law that is out there to allow parents to petition their LEA to convert a school to a charter. And the state board involvement, as far as that bill looks like, would be us hearing appeals for, when it works through the process. There are a couple other things also-
Well, there's an interesting one on Tennessee Alternative Diploma Act, which is really aimed at labor and workforce development. It will be a companion to the GED. It'll be a statewide GED, so to speak, and it will be aligned to Common Core. There's, we're expecting a large fiscal note for that. The Department of Labor and Workforce Development will be developing that. Our role will be supporting policy and provide any membership on any advisory boards, et cetera, and that. So I'm not entirely sure how that will move forward with such a large fiscal note. And there's the Special Education Occupational Diploma Study to look at the matriculation of special ed students to the workplace and whether or not we need to provide any more work-based opportunities for them. So that's going to be a study that will take place with a report out to next summer, summer of '14.
Yes, which is expected to have some sort of recommendation for that year, or recommendation and implementation for that following year.
There's a bill on putting a cap on virtual schools, ultimately a limit of no more than 5,000 period, a limit of 1,500 for any new virtual schools that will be opening up associated with the district, ones that are already in operation currently. With more than that, we'll be allowed to keep that, but no more than 5,000 period is the reasonable criteria. is a reasonable criteria.
And no more than 25% of that number for, from out-of-district students, can it move?
So we've got a packet here that if you're interested in what's happening on, and we'll kind of try to provide you then a summary report, well, another packet next board meeting, and then a summary report at the end of session, since you know when all pass.
Okay, good. Appreciate, appreciate that information. I think it's very helpful to go forward. Any questions on any of those legislative initiatives?
Early.
Early, early.
It is early.
Sort of, yeah. Okay. Any questions there? Okay. Anybody else with the agenda? Appreciate you.
Mr. Chairman, anyone wanting to ride in the van over to THEC? I'll have it right at the front door in a few minutes. And I'll be happy to bring you back here at any point later in the day to pick up your car, if you just want to fill your luggage in the back.
Would it be inconvenient if you took the van to the hotel, and just drive the car and leave the hotel with the family?
Well, we can do that, yeah, on the way to THEC.
We've got time.
We'll do that.
Okay, that's, that's-
So we're going to go straight to the hotel, pick you up, take you.
Just in clear? Okay.
Just stay out of his book?
Yeah, I've been there more than-
Right.
I wonder, I wonder if you guys say-
Well, would you like to head out?
Go back to your car.
I mean, you're up in the-
Here, I want to-
I already have a lot of good hat.